January 10th, 2023 School Committee Meeting. I'm the Chair Elizabeth Finney and I call this meeting to order. Is there any public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to general business. We have school updates first from Millbury Street Elementary School and North Street Elementary School. Come forward and welcome.
Hi, everyone.
And if you will, just to make sure our audience knows everyone, if you would introduce yourselves.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mandy Leif. I'm one of the co-principals at North Street School.
And I'm Stephen Wilshire, also one of the co-principals at North Street School.
Joanne Stockland, Principal of Millbury Street School.
And I'm Paul Schwab, the Assistant Principal of Millbury Street School.
Awesome. Great.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for having us. We're excited to come back and be jointly sharing this presentation with all of you, give you an update on the schools. And you know, I think that one of the things we really want to try to convey tonight is where we are after the past years of COVID and moving through that. And as we, we don't need a reminder, but every year has had a fail fart since we closed back in the spring of 2020. But you know, I think Joanne, Paul would agree with Mandy and I saying this year certainly it's feeling more and more normal as we go through the school year. And we hope to highlight some of that for you today. As we sat down and really thought about what our theme and message wanted to be tonight, it kept coming back to this culture of community and collaboration. Not to say that that didn't exist during COVID, but a lot of the things that make the Grafton Schools, the Grafton Schools were not able to be happening over the past few years. And although we were in person last year in the hybrid year, a number of the activities, the number of the ways that we interact with the community and the community interacts with us, we weren't able to do for obvious reasons. So it's been a big goal of ours to really bring that back, that community piece and that really that collaboration. So we're all working together for the best interest of our students and our staff. And that includes the work Joanne and Paul are doing with Mandy and I and our teams. And again, we'll highlight those things as we kind of move through tonight's presentation and share our update with you. There are four big areas that we wanted to move through this evening. Again, our school communities, but really that value of the family partnership. I know a lot of you as former North Street parents or current North Street parents. So you know that partnership is very alive and well. And I know that is echoed over at Millbury Street as well. The importance of professional collaboration amongst our staff and support staff and district staff. Of course, the student experience, how we involve the students in the daily life of the school and also some of those choices and leadership opportunities. And then continuing that commitment for SEL. Certainly, we're seeing that need continue to be a high need for our kids as they return. So how are we addressing that? How are we making sure we continue those conversations? And we'll also touch on academics in relation to professional collaboration because that collaboration leads to improved academic performance. So first up is focused on community. I was going to share just a little bit of what that's looking like at North Street and then have Joanne add to some of that as well. As you know, we both have very vibrant PTGs in our school. We're just blown away by the amount of fundraising that our PTG is able to manage every single year and contribute so much to the school through enrichment and field trips, materials for the classroom, you name it. You've seen all of that and heard all of that before. But in addition to those things, they've come back in a big way. Parents are now volunteering in the school again. Our mystery reader program is up and running at our younger grade levels. Conferences were largely held in person. We did offer remote conferences, but a lot of parents wanted to be in the school and see what was going on. Family literacy nights, I can think back to the very end of last school year. And I, we had our art gallery walk and it was probably the most well-attended event I've ever seen at North Street School. We had a line out the door wrapping around the building, trying to get everybody in. And I think it speaks to how our families want to be in the schools. They want to be a part of what's going on and their kids are excited to share it again, too. Joanne, anything you want to add to that?
No, I just, it's nice to see that the community, not only parents, but the high school kids are coming back into the building in larger numbers. And there definitely is an excitement to see the different community members back in school and helping us out.
And Colonial Day, many Thanksgivings, Wantapink, History Day. Those were taking place this fall already. Our school assemblies are back and they just bring so much importance to the, to the core values of our schools. They seem like very small things, but in our surveys to staff, a lot of staff commented how they missed those things. They missed staff meetings. I mean, what teacher would ever say they were missing getting together in staff meetings? But they just were finding those virtual opportunities were not the same. Our band and choral concerts are fully back up and operational. That'll be next week at the high school. And it really is, it's just great to see. I feel like every day, I've said to Mandy a few times, like today really felt like it was before COVID. And that's a really great feeling that I have, I know. And I hope the kids are feeling that, too.
I think that they are. I was just going to add that Paul and I were having a conversation today that we really feel like there is a larger sense of calm among the students in the building and even the staff since the start of the school year. I think as each day becomes to feel more normal or revisiting how it used to be, it's sort of, everyone's just kind of settling in now. And it is definitely feeling as it did, you know, a couple of years ago before the COVID.
And so we wanted to shift a little bit and look at some of the data and instruction that we're using in the schools to really get a better sense of where our students are at as we really kind of revamp up and also drill down to some of the subgroups that really specifically we want to support. And then the action steps that come from that. So you know, in mathematics, two of the big ones, of course. When we look at data, we're very fortunate to have brought on the STAR Renaissance Assessment System, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It's going to be administered again at the end of this month. And we've already kind of sampled it a little bit with some students. And we're, we're seeing that it's going to result in some really great data that we can use to inform our instruction, but also inform our professional development for staff and teachers. Of course, we've been using DIBELS as well for ELA, our comprehension, Fanta, St. Penel. But then we have all these other assessments we can do as well as needed, similar with mathematics. But what that has led to is I think a really effective use of our half-day time, our professional development time with the teachers to both look at the STAR assessment data, all these other pieces we have on student progress and then you'll work towards intervening, are differentiating to extend if needed as well. That's included cross-building PD, something that Joanne and I had started doing before COVID. Again, another example, we have our staffs come together and although our times are different, we can make that work. So our last half-day, which was held in October, we had our, our grade levels and other teachers together that we led along with Jenny DeRost and Lisa Rice. And it was really great conversations to be had, a lot of sharing across buildings to create that consistency.
Yeah, I just was going to add too, I think another thing that's really been a highlight, and I think the timing was essential as we came back to full in person, was bringing in the coaches, both in literacy and math, because I think it was the good timing. There was a nuance of a fresh start and they've really done a fantastic job integrating themselves not only into the classroom with the students, but working alongside the teachers. I really feel that there's a real atmosphere of collaboration and it's rejuvenating and it's exciting.
Yep. Something else I've seen there as well, and those coaches are both, you know, working with students, but they're also working with the teachers, co-teaching, modeling, really sharing those, helping new teachers. I think new teachers right now are coming into the field at a very interesting time. We've revamped our new teacher training program so that monthly, as they meet with some of the administrators, it really is supporting what they need at that moment. And they're walking away feeling hopefully successful and that they've achieved something as they're spending time with other new teachers and coaches and administrators in the district.
And we've also been able to, even looking at STAR data, really use those coaches to do like six to eight-week RTI in the classrooms and rotating through so that they're getting in front of more teachers and more children throughout the school year. So that also has been a really nice impact on supporting the students' learning and as well as the teaching.
Kind of drilling down a little bit, looking at some of the specific focus areas in academics. So we have obviously our vision program, which is a general math program, the new addition going on. But we wanted to highlight literacy, special education, our English language learners as well. Because in each of these areas, we've really worked over the past year in providing targeted programming training for, for these groups, making sure that they have the backgrounds that they need and the training they need to implement programs based on what the data is saying that the student needs. Again, coaching is a big part of that across the buildings and making sure that we are progress monitoring on an ongoing basis with all of these kids. We know that learning was interrupted or it was challenging during these past few years for all students, but particularly our high-need students as well, research is showing. So we really need to beef up that support for those students, beef up the PD and the training for the teachers that are with those students and really make sure we're continuing to have conversations around how those students are progressing so that we can intervene as possible.
And one other thing to mention is over the course of the last couple of years, we've really done, we've done some changes in our instructional scheduling. We've increased our literacy block from 90 minutes to two hours, which has had a really nice impact on instruction. As well as our math blocks are now 75 minutes long as opposed to 60. And that's continuous instruction. So those have been impactful as well.
I just wanted to go a little bit further with literacy. When I, when we put literacy on there, we were looking at our, our Tier Two support for students that are, those that aren't quite meeting the benchmarks for literacy. Our literacy specialists are Orton-Gillingham trained, but we've also trained a number of teachers in Wilson as well over the past few years, just to name a few of those programs that we have going on right now. I agree. Do you keep going? Moving on to social emotional learning. I know, I speak for Joanne and I when I say that one of the biggest things we've done in our staff and adding staff in the past few years has been putting an adjustment counselor at each of our buildings. It has been vital to all of us and also the students and our families that have needed to access that support. And that looks like a number of different things. It looks like supporting students on a daily basis. In our SST, our student support teams, being part of that team. Just today, our adjustment counselor was having great conversations with us about a student that we were meeting on an SST, looking at accommodations in IEPs, supporting those, goals areas, 504s. And again, just in general, family support and community connections. We are seeing families reach out to us and it's great to have that resource in the building to be able to support them.
Yeah, and you know, our school adjustment counselor has done some really wonderful things with working with teachers and the teachers saying, you know, I'm having, struggling with this class. They're doing a lot of, seem really anxious. They'll go in and do a targeted lesson specifically on like mindfulness or strategies to relieve stress. Or at sixth grade, you know, they get a little gossipy, maybe not focusing on what they should. They'll go in and talk about, you know, the hurtfulness that gossip can cause. But they're really, she is Christine Carlsen is really targeting with teachers what that specific need is for that community and then going in and designing lessons and working with the students and the staff. And it's really, it's nice to see they're not just there to support, but they're being proactive and they're going in there and asking what the teachers need and asking what the staff needs and then actually taking action upon it. So we're so grateful that we have that school adjustment counselor.
Absolutely. And kind of like what we're looking at moving forward, that third column there is to enhance that. We both have very robust responsive classroom schools. So we do morning meetings in the morning. We talk to the kids about logical consequences and all of those components. But Second Steps is a program that will be trialing in February. And with that comes some actual concrete curriculum lessons to target specific needs in the classroom around social emotional skills. And I think that builds off of what Joanne was talking about with our adjustment counselors going in. This will give our teachers more of a toolkit to be able to have those conversations on, on a more regular basis. Our goal is hopefully to have that school-wide program begin in the fall of 2023, working with our staffs to get that in place.
We're not doing away with our responsive classroom philosophies that we've built our school communities around. It's really just a nice merger of taking, you know, what is a philosophy of a school culture and climate and blending it with a specific curriculum. Like Steve said, it has developmental appropriate lessons at each grade level. Kind of creates a morning meeting situation, you know, with a built-in lesson. So we're kind of combining the two. I think it's going to be really nice.
Absolutely. And it really is a continuation. K1 programming is in place already, so it's just building on that as the students articulate up to us. And kind of getting back to the student first piece, the kind of the student experience, if you will. A lot of these things that you'll see up here, some of them, but not, not most of them, we were able to actually have in place. And again, I want to go back to what we shared at the beginning, that I think a lot of these things are what makes the Grafton Public Schools great, certainly our two schools. And it was painful not to see a lot of these things being able to go on. But they are now fully going on as I know Mrs. Miller will say, there's a lot of clubs every single day, finding out where they're going. But the extracurricular time for our kids, the after-school opportunities, both provided through the school district, but also the Grafton Recreation, we partner with them. I mean, we have three or four going on every single day right now. And it's really great to see all of them are fully attended or maxed out and then some. We're having to find, we're adding sessions as needed. We have, it's great to see the mentorship program from the high school coming back in and supporting the teachers. They're in almost daily. Our former seventh and eighth graders come monthly, a handful of them. And they visit classrooms, supporting and helping in the classrooms. This coming month, we'll have seventh graders, Paul's idea, come and talk about nature's classroom with our sixth graders. They attended last year at the end of the year. Buddy classrooms, all of those things are fully back into the schools, which really just brings, I think, the life back into the school. The experiences, whether it's field trips, those classroom enrichments, things like the Hour of Code, where again, high school students were coming down to support Janet Lewis and Chris at Millbury Street to get that returned. And then our student council, we were able to, you know, we had student councils in place. It's one of those things that was happening, but not at the same level. I know Mandy and I were able to bring our student council members over to the food pantry this year, deliver the actual items, get to see how the food pantry operates, notice that they're having a real difference.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I don't know what I can add to that, but definitely there is a stronger sense of service and community. Kids are creating their own clubs. We have a fifth grade crochet club now that they, you know, it's a little Renaissance time. And you know, now I have a child who's ready to save every pet shelter in the area. We have a scheduled meeting with him tomorrow morning to get that going. But like I said, it does feel like the kids are starting to come back to, you know, where they were before, being a little bit more assertive and out there. So it's a great place.
Yeah. One of the nice things, it's a small change, but not that long ago, the clubs had to be earmarked for like certain things. And now there's a lot more flexibility in how Joanne and I can work with staff to create opportunities for clubs. And I would say the majority of them end up being student-driven. We had a student that really was interested in archery and passionate about it, ended up, you know, finding out how we could rent archery equipment, how we could get Jenny Peters trained. And Jenny got trained and spent a day doing that. Next thing you know, we have an archery club that's happening.
And at Millbury Street, too, Dave did it. I've had second graders save the ocean last year. Though kids will come to me with a proposal, they've got it down now. And all I have to say is if you can find a teacher to do it with you, we'll try it out. And they do, they find a teacher. And I think that's really how it should be. It should be the children deciding what their need is at the time and what they want to do. And I think right now we're back to the place where we can allow them to do that again. So it's great.
Absolutely. Yep. And that, that, I mean, that's a very brief, I know, overview of everything that's happening. And we'd love to answer questions, talk more about any of those and all of those things. But we're.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from the committee?
Just had one question.
Yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit about, more about your trialing of the Second Step program? Are you doing it in like a couple of classrooms? Are you trialing it overall?
Yes. So we're going to be introducing it at our staff meetings in February. We really are able to do it in as many classrooms that will want to do it. I've already talked to a few teachers at North Street that are interested in trialing it. And hopefully a lot more will, will take us on, but across all grade levels.
Yeah, I think we're set up. Kristen helped us to make sure that we had the pilot available to all teachers that wanted to do it. And the beautiful thing about it is each of those lessons is kind of standalone, appropriate for the grade level, but so they can pick it up wherever they want to in the year. The program has enough to take you through the year, I think one lesson a week. But teachers can pick it up wherever they are. So they actually can go through the lessons and see where their children are right now and decide which ones they want to pilot with them and then give us the feedback. But it's not limited to a certain amount of teachers, it's open to all of them. And you know, I think, you know, my teams will probably want to do it all together because they love to discuss and compare. So I think that they'll be excited about trying a few of the lessons out.
And just perspective-wise, pre-COVID, our plan was to have Second Steps at the pre-K through one, start there. And then the following year, evident at the two-six level. COVID got in the way of that, but for years we've had it running very effectively at pre-K one. So to some degree, we're familiar with it.
Will you be doing it once a week or are the teachers allowed to do it?
Designed for a weekly lesson, yeah. But I think the theme of the lesson carries through for your morning meetings. And again, we're not going to be giving up the, you know, traditions of responsive classroom. They'll still have their share, their greeting, you know, their game, that type of thing. But again, I think it's going to be a really nice blend.
Yeah. Yeah, the, each lesson is meant to be that week-long theme for the week. And our classrooms already are meeting, mid-morning meeting every single day. It's the first thing they do, it's a really important part of that, of that day, getting set up for success. So it really is a tool that can be implemented during that time. That's the goal. Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, I had a couple then. I, I was really happy to hear about some of the intervention and how you were also training teachers to respond in, in the classroom and how they were building sort of their reading intervention skills, it sounded like, in the classroom. Because one of the, one of the things I'm most concerned about is when we have intervention and kids are getting taken out of the classroom, they're also missing that, that other classroom time. And I just wondered, you know, given the last couple of years, are you seeing an uptick in numbers of kids who need intervention? And it sounds like you're already taking some steps to kind of, you know, mitigate the time that they're being taken out. But I wondered if, if you've had to do anything else to try to, you know, mitigate the, the other classroom time that they're missing? If, especially if they're, the numbers are increasing.
We aren't always trying to keep the kids in the classroom, for sure. So there are some, I mean, a specific example, there's some reading programs that, that do avail themselves to be done in the classroom in a small group, just as the teachers would rotate through their small reading groups like Just Words. That was one program that they had been pulling out, but I asked my co-teachers to pull those kids and just keep them in the room for the Just Words group, as it would be for any other instructional group. Some of the programs are a little bit more systematic, really targeted and have to be followed very strictly, like the Wilson groups, it wouldn't really facilitate that in a classroom where there's a workshop model going on, that type of thing. So where we are, we do, where we can't, we still make sure that we're, we're getting the most we can out of that instructional time.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's important also, specifically when it comes to reading, that we're looking at what is the specific need of that student? Is it a comprehension concern? Is it phonemic awareness decoding concern? And then matching that student with the proper program so that we're addressing what that need is. And a lot of that goes into the science of reading, which I know you're probably familiar with as well. But that, I think that is critical. And whether that happens at a Tier Two level or a Tier Three level, making sure that we make adjustments if we're not seeing the growth that we have.
And we're really not trying to supplant the instruction. We're really trying to give them the double dip. So the child's going out for Wilson, we're making sure that they're in for their full reading block in the classroom, too, because that's what they need, right? So we're trying to really maximize that direct instructional time, whether it's with their Wilson teacher or it's back in the classroom with their teacher.
Good.
I was also excited to hear, Mrs. Stockland, you mentioned the adjustment counselors going into the classrooms and having programs. It's another thing I'm always keen on is, you know, kind of catching those students who may need some support like that, who may not be the outliers, who stand out and, and may be pulled out to, to get some of that. But going into the classroom, it kind of catches other kids who might be, you know, hiding in the back of the room. But you know, they're listening. And I was wondering, is there, are there actions like that going on at North Street, too?
Yeah, and I think it goes also to the adjustment counselor. I know also I've been in the sixth grade classrooms a little bit this year, talking about rumors and drama and, you know, the impact of that. Because I think all of us that are, can, are outside the classroom can come in and have those conversations in meaningful ways to the kids. So Mrs. Worm does a lot of that as well. I think it's another face that kids are familiar with as well and feel comfortable going to. You know, a lot of times kids are, they think they're in trouble if they've gone to the office and they don't necessarily want to come down, but they feel more comfortable going to, say, Mrs. Worm. And also our speech and language pathologists, they do a lot of that in classroom support as well, going into rooms and working with all students, not just those that, you know, need that speech support.
But you wanted to add something? I just could say, having that extra body has been critical because our school psychologists, aside from doing all the data metrics and the testing for special ed, we're picking up that piece of trying to support students. The school adjustment counselor, one nice thing is, you know, we used to think about the, the school psychologist meeting with the kids at lunch bunch, right? That would be the time of the day, they'd meet with the kids that needed it. But with the school adjustment counselor, she said, I need to do more than just a lunch bunch. So she actually meets with kids in times in their morning when they're available, whether it's a flex time for the older kids or it might be that morning meeting time once a week. But she actually formulates groups around a specific targeted need that those kids need to work on. And she does it for six to eight weeks, really specific and targeted. And then she, when the kids are ready, she'll work with the teachers and find another targeted group. It gets not in the same room necessarily, but across that grade level. And they have to be, and she's able to find kids that match, you know, that meld together, that are supportive of each other. So it's definitely done with more intention. Not that it wasn't before, but we just didn't have the human resource to, to make it work as nicely as it's working now. And what a critical time to bring that in, which is why we're all so grateful that we now have that person. And the impact is just amazing, the feedback from not only kids, but the parents are so grateful. And our relationship with Shrewsbury Youth Family Services has grown so much better because we do have that person, you know, as a bridge between the organization and the schools.
Yeah, and having that conduit in the school that has the counseling background, communicating with the families, I just think is, it's just in that in of itself is a huge benefit. We would have those conversations, but I was a fifth grade teacher, I was not an adjustment counselor. And so, you know, doing, always doing our best, of course, and directing families to the right resources and making sure we, we have that like clinical sense of perspective. But, but our adjustment counselors, they have that training, they have that background.
And definitely having there, I think enhances for us and puts that in our lens more than it had before. You know, we're focusing on instruction and, you know, curriculum and assessment. But also having them there makes us realize again, it's really about the students, right? And the families and that human piece and that, that brings it to the forefront more than, you know, getting lost in the scramble of all the other things.
And then my last question, unless anyone else wants to try any, is how are the band and chorus numbers? Because we're, we're still sort of seeing the ripple effects where the numbers are still low up into the middle school and high school levels. But are kids coming back or they, are they coming? It's full force?
Now that their lips can actually touch the instrument.
Yeah, it's a little bit fun. Yes.
Really helped.
Good, good.
Particularly in the fourth and fifth grade. Because we have to remember there, our sixth graders, for example, did not really have until last year a little bit of that band opportunity. So in essence, this year, our band teachers have said they're beginner, they're all beginner band students. And there's always a lot of excitement in fourth grade and that usually continues throughout. But we did have a number of students across all grade levels come back to chorus. levels come back to chorus and band. And it's just, it's one of those things, again, you walk around the hallways and you just hear it, and it just adds to the life of the school. And it's been absent for so long, um, that you realize, you forget, you realize how much you missed that, you know? Um, how much the kids kind of miss that opportunity.
And the music teachers too.
And the music teachers.
And us listening, every time I post the date for the all-school meeting, uh, right away, I get here from Laura Legault, my band teacher, and Michelle Kelly, my choir teacher, "Art, well, we're performing," you know, like they have to get themselves right at the beginning, for the, the all-school meeting, to make sure that they're out there and they're performing for the student body.
Absolutely.
And we're very excited about the concerts coming up at the high schools.
Yep, yep, going to the Worcester Railers in February.
Oh, and we used to be like, "Teachers, do you want to come help at the band and choir concert behind the scenes?" They'd be like, "Rrrr." But I have, honestly, we must have like fifteen of our staff coming to help at the concert, because I think they too are excited that.
Just excited.
We're out there, yeah, we're doing it again, it's great.
All right. Anybody think of anything? Well, no?
Well, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, so much.
Great hard work.
It's great to see you all.
Thank you for coming tonight. All right, as our teams are transitioning here, I'll just announce next up is the 2023-24 calendar. Excited to talk about this. It's an interesting topic.
All right, since the initial draft was shared at the last meeting, I made a few very minor edits and then moved April vacation, I had it on the, the wrong week, so fixed that. Um, as you know, we received feedback from GTA, I shared that, uh, with the school committee, and here we are. There was really nothing of real substance change from the last time that we met. Um, we have a two-page calendar document. On the second page, we simply updated the reporting dates that would match up if the, the calendar as presented is approved. If it's modified, we'll change it accordingly, and we set tentative open-house dates. Um, aside from that, everything else stayed the same in terms of the draft.
Opening up to the committee for discussion. Any thoughts, comments?
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, Jay, so, you know, you had shared there was some concern about the Wednesday half-days. I wanted to just run that publicly by you and talk a little bit. Is, is that a concern that you really see on your end? We've had it on Wednesdays, we talked last year about the consistency of the Wednesday, um...
And to add to that, can we talk about, I think we've talked about before, but why we, why we originally had them on Wednesdays too?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm not proposing we change, I just wanted to get your opinion on what you thought were...
And that was probably, I don't know what, if anybody else saw any big themes. That, to me, was one of the bigger themes in terms of the feedback. Um, and I believe the thinking was, on the whole, that it would help students, like whatever the schedule is at that given school, on a Wednesday would theoretically be the same every Wednesday, and that student five times a year would miss whatever that class was. Um, I get it, I've seen districts, uh, especially in the past, that I was in one that every other week, they had a half-day on the same day and they could plan accordingly. We could plan around the five days. Um, I did run that by the principals, they thought, given that there are five in a year, we can, and we do plan accordingly for that, so that the impact's minimized. But, um, going back to historically, I think I'm summing it up correctly, saying that the thought was that it was a predictable day. It wasn't just random, that we picked Wednesdays kind of out of a hat, to be honest. I don't think there was anything particular about Wednesday. Um, Mondays, we have staff meetings, I'd rather avoid Mondays, and for obvious reasons, I, I think, having, making the most of the valuable PD time that we have, five times a year, I'd rather not do that on a Friday afternoon. Um, so, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I think I speak for the administration where any of those days would work, but, um, it seems to have served us well, just having that, that set day.
So how does it not make the most, so, what's, can you further elaborate on the issue with Fridays, though? You said to make the most of, or do you just not?
Um, just as a leader of an organization with five hundred and seventy employees, I don't think any large, or, uh, large organizational leader would pick Friday to do high-level, meaningful PD on Friday afternoon. But, that, that's, again, that's just me.
I, no, I, I...
Well, for me, being, talking about it like that, I mean, it doesn't make sense to change to a Tuesday or a Thursday after we've had them for so long, and parents and students are consistent. And Jay, um, points out it's five.
Yeah.
It's really not as much as maybe, you know, I, I get the, the Friday love, I, but as a kid, I loved, you know, getting out. But we have to really think about what these are for, and it is for professional development, which I, is important. So, I don't have any, I don't know about the rest of you, but I just wanted to talk that through because that came up, and at least wanted to address concerns that we heard.
And as an employer and manager, I'm glad you said that because I, I can, now I, I see that. And, and, um, it's sort of a, it's, it's not when you get people's best attention, you don't have people's best attention on an afternoon on a Friday. I was thinking of it more like, okay, the, originally, I was thinking, um, are we, if we moved it to Friday, are we sort of giving, and I'm thinking about it more in the kids' view, from the kids' view, are we giving them more of a break? Like, I think our kids, you know, they need a break. And having it in the middle of the week, I've heard issues about disruption and confusion and, and things like that. And is it, is, I think it maybe is easier on the kids, you know, yeah, it's nice to give them a little extra time, but it's also something that's like, a little more healing time, a little more, but, but on the other hand, that's the reason that we're taking these half-days is for PD. And, and if it's not going to be successful, as it could be, by doing it on a Friday afternoon, then I don't think it's worth that little extra breathing time. Um, and, um, like I said, it is five days, so that was sort of where my head was on these.
The only reason I, too, thought about Fridays was for working parents that struggle with that Wednesday all of a sudden, and often it, even though it's, we promote it and it's everywhere, I mean, even for me, sometimes it sneaks up on me and I'm like, "Yeah, gotta change meetings, I gotta," you know? Um, but I agree with you, I think that, um, the primary goal is to have the teachers engaged. And, I mean, I'm not at my best on a Friday afternoon, so, um, you know, the only thing, I guess, I would think about is, you know, it continues to be, I think, a challenge for some parents with childcare and stuff, but I don't know how we get around that.
Yeah. I'm curious, what are, do our students do, our student members, do you guys have any thoughts? Have you felt like the Wednesdays are a disruption or anything, or do, or is it just, it's okay?
I honestly kind of like it, because for me, the week is long, so it's like a break in the middle is just nice. And even then, like, you, because we get out at ten-twenty, plenty of people make plans with friends, friends after. And like, it's kind of nice to just have a nice break in the middle and then go back to school, because then you have two days and it's the weekend.
I agree, yeah.
It's pretty good, honestly.
More time to catch up on homework and student learning.
Yeah, that one too.
Well, as, as much as, you know, the students are first, but, um, we want, we want the staff to have their PD time, and we want them to be productive, because that is serving the students. Um, and what I like about the Wednesdays is that, you know, it is consistent for parents. It's not a random Tuesday one month and a Thursday the next, that was a problem we had before. And now that it's always Wednesdays. I think the schools are doing a great job of communicating those days. I know, they sneak up on you, so it's not a judgment, they sneak up on me too. Um, but I feel like the lower-level schools, um, are doing better communication-wise, so they, they, maybe they need more, I don't know, maybe they need a, a list like every month, like here, here's the day, you know, kind of really make sure parents are aware. Because that's when you struggle, is when it sneaks up and you don't have something arranged. And sometimes it can be hard to arrange something for, you know, March twentieth in September when you find out. Um, but I do think that it, it's for the teachers, it's for the students, and it's not great for the parents. But we have to do it sometime, and we're not going to find a time that's going to work for everybody. So I'm happy with the Wednesdays.
Yeah, having the, the consistency with the Wednesday too, it, I think, parents get familiar with that, and they know, you know, it helps to know to look out for it. I am seeing, I'm seeing it on updates, you know, the middle school sends out, it's always at the top, very top of the updates, and, um...
And the high school kids seem to know when it's coming up, because they're excited and they make their, make their brunch plans at Stephanie's, now that they're open on Wednesdays again.
It's fun.
Any other issues with other parts of the calendar? I, I know we're coming back January first.
Second.
Or second, coming back af, yeah, the day after New Year's. I, I thought about that for a minute, but then I thought, well, I don't want to add a day to the end of the calendar either, but any other, um, issues that, or anything that anyone else has seen? I know we've, we have gotten some comments from the GTA, so...
I just had one other clarification question. Um, people think, you know, we can just do half-days and it still counts. So like, why can't we just have a half-day here and then we'll take a day off? And that, can you just talk about that in general, the timing and what it means and hours that we have to have?
It really boils down to, uh, time on learning. And there are a certain number of hours, that one-eighty isn't magical, the, the fact that all schools have generally the same length of the school day, et cetera, isn't just by chance. Um, it's to get to nine-hundred at elementary and then nine-ninety at secondary in terms of hours that need to be spent dedicated towards learning. So not recess time, not lunchtime, et cetera. That's what dictates to get to a hundred, you have to have at least a hundred and eighty days. Um, and you've got to hit the, those time on learning, that, you've got to reach that bar. Um, to do that, we can have those five half-days, which count as days towards the one-eighty. But any more than that, we'd fall short of the ni, the nine-hundred-plus hours. So, you couldn't, in fantasy world, have a half-day every single day and say, "We had a hundred and eighty days," you wouldn't hit the time on learning requirements. Does that make sense?
It does, so it's hours.
That's why most districts have roughly five days. They could have more, but then they're going to have a longer school year.
Yeah, and we see that, we see that with holidays off, we talked about that in the past.
But it's close, I mean, everyone is pretty close.
Thank you, I just, we get that question sometimes.
Yeah, I get that. And I get, um, kind of tied to calendar, when we do have snow days, um, why can't we just do remote? Uh, the state does not allow that in any way, shape, or form right now. So even if everybody had one-to-one and we wanted to and could do it, we are not allowed to. It would not count as a day.
And I think when people hear that other districts can do it, it's because they have longer years, they have more days that are built in.
You could do it that way, sure.
So, so, they have extra days.
You could do that, right.
Right, which we just, we, we don't have those extra days. So if you wanted to take away those snow days, we still need to...
You'd have to add a day, which is not what people want.
But you'll hear that other school, there are other schools that do it.
Yeah, there are a few, and that, that's why.
Yeah, and that's why. Yeah, but it's like, uh, wait a minute.
They've got a buffer that, we used to have, years ago, we were, uh, one-eighty-three at one point.
Yes, I remember.
But, we just don't know, and don't now, in most districts, the great majority do not.
Right, yeah, so, yeah. I mean, for me, I don't have any, I'm, I'm good with the calendar, so...
When is, uh, is graduation planned on this calendar? I know it's usually, is it on here?
We don't usually put it on the calendar, because it isn't set by...
Yeah, do you know when it would be?
I don't.
You don't know, yeah, okay.
I hesitate.
Don't start crying yet, Laura. Oh, you can speak up.
I had, no, I hesitate to bring this up, because I know, from even before I was on the committee, from watching committee meetings, that this has been very well thought out. Um, but the conference day, the, or as my daughter calls it, No School November, because we've got, um, Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, and the conference day in the same week.
So that the reason that's there, that's actually not the optimal time. Um, it's the election day. So we'd have to take a day off.
Have to be closed anyway.
We have to be closed. The thought was, we have enough parking to have people come in for conferences and have the teachers, but we don't have, we're just not able to stay open.
Right.
So it was trying to kill...
We'd be closed that day anyway, right. It's election day now that you say that.
That, that's why it's there.
Amy?
It's actually not election day this coming year. The only places that there are elections are cities. Our, our municipal elections in May, there is no election on November seventh for us.
Then, we should probably hold on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up too.
I just, I just looked it up to make sure I wasn't speaking out of turn.
Yeah, but we don't have any, but who would we vote for?
We don't have anything.
Nothing.
Nothing.
So we did it last, we did it last year because it was a presidential election.
Yeah, I thought that was from the clerk's office, to take the seven.
No, it was, it was me, Jay.
Oh, you said to take the seven?
I asked to take election day off because of the security, the parking, the general...
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, last year, but not for this coming year.
No, for last year, that was the midterm elections. And there won't be anything this year, the next election won't be till, well, it'll be one in May for municipal, but then it'll be next, it'll be the twenty-fourth, we'll have a, twenty-fourth, we'll have an election.
Nothing will go on at the high school, the seven.
We can be open.
So you can move that around if...
Yeah, the teachers.
Laura, were you going to say?
I just had to make a comment about this, No School November, which I hear all the time. We take it off in December, there's more days off in December, it just drives me insane.
I think it's that one week.
It's that one week, and I get it, and you're not the only one who says it all the time, but I just...
I was quoting my child.
Well, she's lovely and very smart, and I agree. But I do think the two days like that is, is, and I think that also came up in, in some of the concerns. Um, so to me, it comes down to, do we want it before report cards come out or after? And in the high school, it doesn't even matter at this point, because, so, I, I think it depends on, do we want it earlier or later, and not worry about the, just this year, because next year we'll have the same midterm issue and we'll want to put it back on election day.
So should we keep it consistent? Is there anything to that? I see report cards are coming out December eighth. I know one year we had it, and this was before I was on the committee, but we had it the first week of December, I think it was. Um, so that would put it on December fifth, so it was just days before report cards come out. So if people want it before report cards so that they can, you know, implement changes or something like that, it's not really going to. Oh, grades close, let's see, for K through six, the thirtieth anyway, so that would be, I don't know, I, I guess, I would kind of think as a, as a parent in the school district, I would like to see conferences before grades close, so that if there are issues that need to be addressed, you can address them before it's kind of too late.
I would say before grades close, but after progress reports, because a lot of times, that's the first and opportunity a parent has to discuss, although I didn't get one this year. Um, eleven-three for the high school, and there're ten-two for the middle school, and then ten-eleven for the K six.
I just want to bring up a thought, and I, I, I agree with you, except for the difference between when we were kids, that was really the first time. As parents now, we have, I mean, it's like at my fingertips, any moment I want to know, and you can always reach out. And I know not everybody does, but there's always those opportu, it's not a surprise. If you get that report card and you're surprised, there's been a lot of failures along the way, regardless of the conference. So, I, to me, I mean, I would go, I'm not going to fight either way, whatever works best for our staff and our, our teachers and our parents, you know, makes most for me. You seem like you keep trying to say something, we keep our...
No, no, it's all great. I, I think my, my gut says that I, I would request that we hold off on vote and let me go back and we might as well get that feedback from at least our leadership team who can, I don't think we need to have a voter or anything else, but get feedback, what works best. And, um, would there be interest in, if it was in November, rather than have that choppy week, which again, I thought was dictated, um, to us, with a Tuesday and a Friday off, if it is that week, would you be more inclined to move it to the ninth? Or the flip side of that?
Just thinking for college visits, that would be phenomenal.
Well, I can, right, wrong, or indifferent, I can tell you the feedback I'd get from parents is, it's a three-day weekend anyhow, we've got to have a day.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just, but I don't, I don't know, I'm just...
I was going to suggest Halloween.
Just to make a bunch of people happy.
Halloween.
Another can of worms.
That'd be a lovely day. That would make me so happy.
Thank you, Laura.
Well, and I think there was some interesting feedback, there was some interesting feedback around, you know, the one-day evening setup that I hadn't ever really thought about. And I don't know if this is an opportunity, when you go back to the staff, you know, there was something in the packet about, you know, changing the way we do it, instead of like a full day and an evening, like maybe we do something different, I don't remember.
They were suggesting two half-days, though.
Were they suggesting two half-days?
Uh, somebody, but it was also an issue with the Monday, that like the, the Monday, the night before.
I just wondered what we should do, because I feel like there's never enough slots.
Don't even think we...
There are not enough slots. There are not enough slots in, in middle school and high school, which is so funny to me because I feel like that's when it kind of tapers off a little bit in terms of parent involvement. But, you know, we're all rushing to get in there.
In though, like I don't know what you would do because they, the teacher, you know, they have this one day, then they commit their evening. I don't know.
It's a contract thing too. So we'd have to re- I mean, so I think there's a lot more to it. And I think we do have to offer an evening. Like you just said, a half-day is difficult for parents. Like then that's another time they have to go and do conferences. So we need to make it accessible. Yeah, I don't know. I also, I mean, maybe it's also just reiterating to people, like you don't have to wait for conferences, like pick up the phone, send an email, like, I, I mean, I know I'm a different parent than others, but.
Yeah, but there is something to having that face-to-face and not, you know, not everyone can, you know, you can email, but this sometimes the, the communication's not the same. And they can't always schedule the time, you know, the teachers have the day and the, the parents are at work today. So it's, you know, there's, there's something unique to, to conferences that, that I think is really helpful. I loved, I mean, this was personally, but I think a lot of parents enjoyed it too, is having that two-hour option for remote conferences. I mean, I did my conferences from Switzerland, so like very, very good for me, but also I think that, you know, having that, hopefully that option can be offered for those people who, you know, work those crazy shifts that, that just can't, can't get in there in person, but can still have the virtual face-to-face at least. But, um, yeah, let's see what the, the teachers have to, what they have to say and it sounds like we're pretty flexible, just what kind of makes sense.
Okay.
It's a challenge because everyone's grades close. We have three different schools and their grades all close at different times, so.
Okay, so I, I will do that and report back.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have something to report about the budget?
Yeah, um, not much.
Okay.
Since we last met, I met right after that with Evan Bressard, the town administrator regarding the timeline. I think we set a very fair timeline, but we have the continued issues with that, that transition between the systems and getting everything into ClearGov. I've thought this for a few days in a row now, but I think we're just about finalized. When I talked to Evan, they're experiencing the same transition process and issues on his side. So due to the delays with the transition, we are able to, he's very comfortable with us pushing back our timeline. I would recommend that we have, well, here's what I recommend. We've got the, the gap between that initial preliminary school department budget, so that first cut at forty-four point two million. And right now, very conservatively, Evan believes that the schools will be allocated forty-three point four million, leaving us a gap of just over eight hundred thousand dollars. So what I am recommending is that this week we finalize that book. Hopefully that happens tomorrow. We spend Thursday and Friday working to reduce that preliminary budget or at least have recommendations to meet that target number. Have those shared with the school committee by the end of this week. And then, and with the full book, and then plan to review those reductions at our next meeting, the end of January. Have that full discussion, can make changes, come back and in the, either the first, depending on how the twenty-fourth goes, have that hearing, either the first meeting in February or the second meeting. Ideally, we'd have a voted upon budget to go to Evan by the end of February, and he was comfortable with that.
Any thoughts, comments on that?
Does that include capital or not?
Um, it should include capital. Uh, he sent us two different drafts of what we expect to receive for capital today. So I have a pretty good sense. At the next meeting, I can, I'll be able to speak to it in more depth. It doesn't look to me that we're going to have the monies, we'll have less money than I anticipated to spend on those ADA compliance issues, which is, is, it is what it is, but it's a challenge.
Well, I have CIPC on Thursday. So if there's anything you want me to speak to.
Yep, and I did meet with Evan again. I met with him actually this evening and we talked about it. So he, he has the same concerns, not just on the school side, but they had the ADA audit and they have needs too. But if we get six hundred thousand, it sounds wonderful at our houses. That would be unbelievable, but when you have six hundred thousand square feet, six hundred thousand, believe it or not, doesn't go too far. And we just have to do that fire panel. That's three hundred thousand.
Do you do the what? I'm sorry.
The fire panel.
Yeah.
It's ancient at North Grafton. It's the most unfun project in the history of projects.
We can't be losing time on learning every time the alarm goes off.
I mean, we have to have, but that's half the money gone.
High schoolers might think that's fun, but you know, elementary schoolers don't think that's fun.
Yep.
Especially in winter.
So that would, that's kind, kind of our plan. If everybody's all right with it, I'll implement it.
Not seeing any objections, so. Think so. All right, anything else on that then? No? Okay. Did you have anything more in a superintendent report?
I do.
Okay.
I wanted to focus in on the work that we have been doing around bullying prevention and response planning. Kristin Gaspere, the leadership team, have just been absolutely fantastic working on this for, for months. Super excited about it. I never thought I'd be super excited about this, but I actually, I think we're making, just doing some really good things for, for the district as a whole. And it's just about wrapped up right now. Not, we still have a couple steps to take, but once we take those, I expect at the next meeting or the meeting after that to be presenting more detail to the committee, sharing the updated plan with the policy subcommittee. And just kind of showing it off in, in a good way. So at present, what, what I want to start by saying is that as we look at bullying, our response and the plan that we have, while we found things we wanted to and did fix, we found consistently that our staff is super proactive and super responsive. Their connection with students is fantastic. Is everything perfect? Absolutely not. And it's super challenging. Anything related to bullying, especially in today's world with the twenty-four seven online piece. I don't know what exact percentage of the bullying and the gateway behaviors that we deal with actually stem from outside of school, but it's the great majority and it just bleeds into school. How you guys handle kind of social life right now is beyond me. Back, I'm old, but back, I used to take the bus, get home and you had a break from the craziness until the next morning at eight AM or whatever time. And for all of you, it's, it's twenty-four seven. It's, it's wild. So I loved that and I wanted to make sure I, I said that. We found that we, we're not approaching bullying and the gateway behaviors as globally as we should. The one that, the piece that jumped out to us initially was around coaches. So most of our coaches are Grafton staff employees, but not everybody. We have a, a new track coach. She works outside of the district, comes in. We redid our entire training for the coaches this past summer, but even with that, we're realizing we need to make all the coaches or paraprofessional staff, volunteers, anybody understand that any of the behaviors that they, they see or experience need to be reported. They could look like they're in isolation because out on the track at three thirty, it certainly seems that way. They're not, they would have no way of noting, knowing if it's a pattern, if, if this is one incident, but it, seven other incidents happened that same day. So making it very clear what the expectations and the needs are of everybody related to GPS subs. We do a pretty good job, I think a very good job with subs. I think we can do even better with this and make it super easy to report those gateway behaviors. Even if you're handling it, I filled in as the coach, things came up and I dealt with them. But in hindsight, I didn't necessarily tell Kevin Carney or the administration. I took it as isolation because that's how it certainly seemed out on the track when two kids are yelling at each other. So making sure that everything we do is, is thought of in global terms, I, I, that, that was big for us. And the plan is certainly outdated. The plan, it turned twelve in the fall. And that was for everybody. As you may recall, when the big push took place twelve years ago, everybody had the same forms. Everybody had the same plan. We've updated it with some different language and different legal terms, et cetera, but this would, this is our first kind of complete overhaul and it was certainly overdue. So that, those were the, the drivers. In terms of changes, I'll just give you a few of them. But obviously we updated the plan. We took the DESI model that has morphed over time, incorporated that into our actual plan. We want that to be not something that myself or Kristin thought up. We want it to reflect state laws, et cetera. So that's the plan itself. We look to increase the efficiency, that, that process that people can utilize, staff or students, parents, anybody can utilize if they're experiencing those gateway behaviors or that, that bullying. We want this to be as easy to use as possible. Created a new flow chart. The flow chart probably mirrored everybody's twelve years ago, but it basically was super complex. You could have put somebody on the moon with the flow chart. It just wasn't something you'd actually use. So we created a new one. We've been piloting that with our administrators. And we want to just make sure it works. And they said, it works. It ensures consistency. It's, it's been great. And as I mentioned, we're updating our annual training. We already redid our coaches' training, the frequency, the actual content. And we're going to be looking at how we can package information for staff, students and parents better and differently. We've been doing kind of what's been done for twelve years. And you send a form, three pages long, that nobody in their right mind really reads. It doesn't add clarity. It doesn't make us better. So that's what we're, we're aiming to do. I mentioned the legal references. It's kind of a no-brainer. We've always had safety plans and conduct plans, but over time, they look different, very different at different buildings, different lengths of time, inconsistency with check-ins, the number of check-ins. And the level of formalization is different at every school. So we want that to be much more robust. Last, the plans should last at least four weeks. We've redone the, the actual forms that will be used. Mandatory minimum of two-time-a-week check-ins with aggressor and victim. So that's a world better. We do have to provide progress reports after two weeks of the four-week plan, which we've consistently done. It hasn't always been at the two-week mark. And it can be certainly before that, but at two weeks, it should be more formalized than it currently is. Technically, it could be just a phone call. And we may pair a phone call with it, but we, we have a form that's pretty detailed and it's going to be utilized. So we have, again, just, just more formality and, and a record of exactly what we're doing. So we've put that together and then a relatively new piece of the DESI model policies, a requirement for all parents to be made aware of the problem resolution system. I'm guessing that we won't have a lot of PRS complaints based on my belief that the work we're already doing combined with a stronger plan and a better process. I, I just don't think we're going to end up having many complaints filed through that system, but parents should be aware of it nonetheless. And then lastly, issues still be, to be resolved, we need to revisit that comprehensive anti-bullying curriculum that does tie into second steps. And again, that, that piece has been really successful at pre-K through one. But we have a lot of programming going on. We'd like to do a better job of kind of formalizing that so it's not just when it's convenient. We've got it really planned out, especially at the middle and high school level where that anti-bullying curriculum technically is built into the health curriculum. But somebody might not take health until the very end of the year. That's not all we do. At the next meeting, that's when Roseanne's going to present at GMS and she's going to be talking to the fantastic work they've been doing in a very focused way, especially over the past couple of years around bullying. They've developed their own curriculum to go with the health curriculum. They're not waiting until every student goes through health, but that's something we, we are continuing to work on. We want to make the, the reporting of bullying and/or gateway behaviors much easier. Right now, we do have it. It's up on, and it's utilized up on our website, but it's, it's not that easy to find. We want it super easy to find and super kid-friendly. Right now on the website, I think it's under anti-bullying. That's not, if I'm getting bullied, I'm not going to anti-bullying, even though I'm anti-bullying. So we're going to have just an icon and again, make it super user-friendly. I've mentioned the form for the progress report, not a big deal, but we simply don't have it right now. And Kristin and I have already revised that, the actual plan itself. We're working through a couple of the documents. Again, twelve years ago, everything was paper-based in this system. And they even had triplicates. That's just not something we do now. So we're, we're going to be using Google Docs and just modernizing what's on there. So we're going to, our work is pretty much done with the exception of one form. On the nineteenth, we're meeting with the leadership team. That entire meeting is focused on bullying. We've had a few meetings up to this point with the leadership team in different iterations, like secondary level, elementary, like what's working, what isn't, and what can we do better? And they said, yeah, this form that we have to use is just the worst. Great. And we, we fixed the process. So I think they're very, very excited about it and are feeling very positive. So after the nineteenth, we'll finalize any changes that need to take place. I would, Kristin and I would share with the subcommittee and the committee as a whole, the different components. And then I'd like to be able to speak to it at an upcoming meeting. And that's all I have, and I can take any questions.
Questions?
Laura? As part of this, do we have a good way to define bullying, right? Because there can be something that is, one person might call bullying and someone else might say kid stuff or vice versa. You know, somebody can be receiving disturbing text messages at home and, and somebody else goes, yeah, that's kid stuff, whereas someone else, depending on the kid, could be really damaging. So how are we
Right.
defining this as part of this program?
Our, our general approach has actually been almost just the opposite. So in, instead of basically not taking anything seriously until we have defined it as bullying or has met that certain criteria, that repeated part, is it repeated twice in a week? Did it happen freshman year and senior year? That actual definition is, is definitely challenging. What we want to do, as we, we, we discuss this at length, we want to set it up in a way that we're approaching taking a, a, a real stance with the gateway behaviors. So not waiting. Again, like that's nothing, not that we're ever saying this, but you know, you got hassled in the hallways, you know, be tougher or that kind of mindset, we don't want. We want those gateway behaviors reported. Jump on them as quickly as we can in those meetings, which we do have with, obviously with students and with parents. At that point, I just had one today where we talked about if this continues, you're going to fall into this realm of bullying. So it's already not great. Like you're talking to me. That's usually not always the greatest. But if this continues, it's a whole, it's another world that we're, we're entering. And this individual definitely one hundred percent understood that. I think the, the kids understand that. So I don't know if I'm really answering your question, but.
You a hundred percent are. I think that's great.
That's the general approach across the board that we want to take.
Right, so these sort of gateway behaviors are absolutely.
And that's what we want reported. It doesn't have to be, I've been in districts where you almost had to prove that it was bullying to report it. It can be, you know, I got shoved and left to its own devices. There's a good chance that it's going to happen again, if not once, a few more times.
I love hearing that because that also helps mitigate the.
I love hearing that because that also helps mitigate any harm that's done to the subject of the bullying too, before it becomes something that really affects them. Hopefully, you're nipping it as well as trying to.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
I think especially with the gateway behaviors too, what we were finding is it might have happened, you know, on a Monday, and this person saw it, and then nobody reported it. And then it happens on Wednesday, and it might just be, well, it's a new event. And then it happens again on Friday, and the kid is feeling terrible. But it might be different aggressors at that point in time. So really tracking each of those gateway behaviors, and then we can see a pattern and more globally looking at it is really what we were hoping for.
A great approach.
When, we haven't finalized this, but how we're going to utilize it. But we do, we now have a, we use Power School, which I think existed back for us 12 years ago, but in a very different way now. We do a really great job using Power School to communicate to staff members who have an individual student. So we had Maroska. Maroska has, you know, a peanut allergy or something. Without sharing it with the entire world, we can make that information accessible to her staff members who utilize this information system day in, day out. It's not a big deal, but it's there, and it's certainly a big deal to, sorry, do you have a peanut allergy? But it's a big deal to her, and we all need to know that. That system, especially at the secondary level, where you're not with Mrs. Smith all day, you're second semester, you're changing classes, and every, like, that stays with it. That's great. So once we get to that bullying, either aggressor or victim, we internally created, what do we call that?
It's an icon, a flag.
Thank you. A flag, basically. And they're all different, and this one's just unique to it, that we're experimenting with, but not to stay with, say, Maroska was the victim of bullying. That's still good, that would pop up. It wouldn't stay with her if it was second grade all through her life. But if something's ongoing and we're concerned about that, being aggressor or victim, that we can now connect with the student. And again, with the idea that we've got the plans in place, we have progress, we do all this work, and that comes off. But currently, we're just, it's just reliant on kind of word of mouth and emails. And so I think that system is going to be, say a lot and do a lot for us.
So just, sorry, can I, did you have your hand up? Okay. Can I just follow up really quickly? I just, I think you said it, but you said if there's behavior that, like aggressive behavior that is corrected, it gets taken off? So it doesn't stick with the student?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's not supposed to be the scarlet letter for life. But if something's ongoing and we can barely get Maroska into school and we're dealing with, everybody, the staff should, her staff should be aware of that.
Yeah, okay.
But again, without knowing that, they do the, I'm going to redo the seating plan and put you next to the two kids that are driving you nuts. I get it, but we want to avoid that.
Yeah. Amy?
So I guess I'm going to bring this up, and I'm not going to say it's a concern, but I'm curious. We're going to see a big uptick in the reporting when this rolls out, I'm guessing. Because I'm assuming you're going to send information to parents because they need to be aware, and students are going to know, this is where I need to go. Whenever you roll out something new like that, you're going to see an uptick, right? How are the staff going to handle this additional load? And who will be most impacted, I guess, is my first question?
I'm not sure we'll see an uptick. I think we might, if we make a giant icon instead of having to find anti-bullying link, maybe we'd see an uptick there. But that's really just, it could be anonymous or not anonymous. I'd say it's probably 50/50. The great majority of the reporting of gateway or bullying behaviors is taking place, and it's, thankfully, and I'm super proud of the community we have. And it's not perfect, but we're doing a lot of things really well, is the fact that we have students consistently talking to adults, trusted adults, and reporting whatever's going on. That's already as high as I've ever seen in a district. Having a new plan with new mass general law, I don't think that's going to, I don't think we're going to be flooded with an influx.
But when reports do go in, who is getting them?
A whole team of people. It depends on who. But right now, when it goes into that anonymous, what have you, I get flagged instantly. Kristen does. Tech director, building principal, building assistant principal, adjustment counselor, the high school, the students' counselor, all get flagged, and then tech reaches out within five minutes, literally, and confirms that we've all received it. It's taken that seriously.
And then the administrator, whoever the adult is that addresses it, I reach out and ask, you know, who's met with the student? What is the resolution of the situation? And then I log that as well.
Part of, probably the biggest increase in workload, and it's something we're welcoming, and we created it this way. We want Kristen and I to be much more involved earlier on, once it reaches that level. Not that it can't be done really well, but we want to make sure we have all the key players, including the parents, involved a little earlier than I think we have in the past, where it escalates and eventually it gets to us. And then we have to get kind of a crash course in whatever's going on and try to kind of fix it. It's much easier in a way for us to be involved on the front end. So we'll see. And I'll certainly report back. It could be, I mean, I guess you guys could speak to it. If you had an issue, do you feel comfortable that you have people that you could say something to?
Yeah, I feel like I've made certain connections with certain teachers that I'd be comfortable speaking to. And guidance, honestly, it's not hard to make meetings with them. I wouldn't say that, like, just because guidance has so many students, it's difficult to create that much of a connection compared to, like, specific teachers.
Sure.
But it's still like an easy access resource.
So if I'm wrong and we get 20 a day online, I might, I'm not going to change it. We're going to figure it out.
I mean, it was just something that occurred to me because I know how loaded up everyone is. I know that, you know, we're still coming out of COVID, and there's a lot of additional work being done. And my sense is that people don't have the bandwidth for one more task. And that's soup to nuts, teachers up through administration. So I'm a little worried. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I think we need it.
I do think that even just the new forms, the shifting more electronic, we got rid of a couple of things that were 12 years old, and nobody was looking at this documentation form. The principals were doing it as if we had the bullying police come to us. We don't. I never saw the forms. They meant nothing, so why are we doing it? So in a way, we took things off their plate, not that they're going to be sitting back.
So they're working smarter, not harder.
100%. And they had a voice in that.
And I still think the focus, and I know you're not trying to take this way, but the focus should be on making sure that if someone does have a problem, that it's accessible and they're able to report it, they know where to report it. And the other thing, I was just looking, and we can address this in a policy subcommittee and in our later talks, but, you know, mass general laws defines bullying as not just by a student, but by a member of the staff. And students should be able to feel if they have an issue there, we want to make sure that we, not us, but you all know about that too. And I don't think that's in the high school reporting form at least. So I think that, you know, that's another thing that we can talk about, but making sure that they, you know, that that's part of the discussion too. You know, we want to make sure that, hopefully, that doesn't happen, but want to make sure that we catch anything like that as well. Everyone should feel safe coming to school. All right, any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have future agenda schedule planning. I think we've already mentioned a couple of things that we're, so we're moving the, so we have the health survey results. Are we moving that to next week? Or is that TBD?
So that meeting went from today to tentatively the 19th, so next Thursday. So it could be at the next meeting.
Okay. And then we'll have the budget hearing on February 7th. So let's see. So do we need to keep a budget discussion on the 24th as well?
So on the 24th, yes. That's when we'll speak to the full book and the potential reductions.
Okay. And then we'll have, hopefully, the final vote on the school calendar on the 7th as well. Any other?
Will we be able to move that up to the 24th?
Which one?
The school calendar? He was just going to check on that.
Oh, yeah. Let's do that instead. Yes, good point.
People might go on those February break cruises and want to book it right away the next year.
Yeah. Not seeing anything else? We'll move on. Approval minutes. We do have some minutes, so we're building those back in now that we've, thank you for helping us get a new secretary hired. So we do have the minutes from December 13th, 2022, and we'll have some more to present at next meeting as well. Getting caught up on those as we had sort of a gap in our secretarial coverage there for a little bit, but we're getting back. So the minutes, as was noted, very detailed, which is great. I can either entertain a motion or we can, if people want to discuss anything upfront, we can do it that way as well. I did have a couple of things.
Can we accept the minutes of December 13th, 2022?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Under number 3A, it's FETIG with two Ts. And there is FETIG. That's the only error I caught because I wasn't actually at the meeting.
I did have one thing, and of course, now I'm scrolling through it. There was a comment, something that sort of comment between you and I, Laura, that I just wanted to clarify. And perhaps this is, I don't know how to rephrase this. Where did it go?
Page eight.
It was after the DECA discussion.
Page three.
No, I had it right there.
Page three?
Page three. Let me see.
This part that Laura privately chatted?
So it says, yeah. Liz proceeded, wait, Laura often privately chatted about an idea with Liz, but left that unmentioned in detail. So what, now it has, I mean, there was no, you know, private discussion that we're trying, it was Laura had passed me a post-it that said, donation, question mark. And just to be fully upfront, everything. And I sort of, I wasn't at the time, didn't really know what she meant, and just kind of said, just kind of nodded or something. I forget, but it was sort of a nod.
I think you said not right now.
Not right now. I didn't know if she was talking, I didn't want to put anyone on the spot and say if she was thinking of a, I didn't know if she meant like a monetary donation or something, if it was something coming from the school committee. Oh, let's everyone chip in money. And, you know, didn't want to put anyone on the spot, so I just kind of said, you know, we'll talk about that. It wasn't a school committee agenda item or anything. It was just something which was about, which was a very good idea, us getting together and pulling a donation item for the DECA gala for their auction, so.
Can I suggest that we just strike the sentence?
Yeah. It's been disclosed now.
And it'll be in the future minutes.
It'll be in this minute, so I just didn't want to, yeah, I didn't want it to go in there as it read.
Yeah, that was one I caught too, but then I forgot about it.
I would like to, maybe we discuss, I don't think the minutes need to be in this.
Yes.
Do you guys talk about this privately?
Yeah. Jessica's been absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, I know, I don't mean to.
She's thrilled. She's like, how on earth did Deppy do it in four hours?
Do we have, can we give her some examples?
We have.
You already have? Okay.
Awesome. These are lovely, but.
And she's working on the other ones as well, right? She already?
She just completed one set. We almost put it on. We got it today, but it was to short notice. Yeah, she's doing great.
Thank you.
You know, as soon as possible, not to push her too much, but if we can, you know, we want to.
Just going to put facial expressions in. Laura often rolled her eyes and sighed.
Then we'll wish we were wearing masks.
Oh, remember, those were the days.
Not that we were doing, okay. So any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? What?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
All right, we have five? All right, great. Thank you. Okay, financial report. We have two warrants today. We'll do these on two different motions. Can I get a motion to approve the December 22nd, 2022 warrant in the amount of $624,763.81?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion on that warrant? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five. All right, great. Thank you. None, I mean, none of them. Okay, so then we have a second warrant, the December 29th, 2022 warrant in the amount of $534,602.41.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and second to approve that warrant. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. An anonymous. All right, thanks. So now we move on to policy. We have four policies tonight to present as a second reading. How would you like to do this, Laura? They're sort of grouped.
Well, can I just do a quick opening? So we discussed this at the last meeting, but there were only three of us here. So just as a refresh, all of these are taken from MASC policies. We've updated them. These are up to the law right now. And so we're presenting as a second reading. They're cleaned up, and this is how it will be. And now we don't really have a lot of leeway with them.
We basically took the MASC policies and made very small changes to them, basically things like adding the inclusive language that we've been trying to do with all of our policies and things like that.
And we changed things to Leora, who reminded us in the rehomed or unhomed, unhoused instead of homeless languages. We updated that. So that sort of thing, not changing the policy's meaning, but making them 2023 ready. There is random numbers. That could be from how I, there is a little bit of an issue because of something that went on. So, yeah, but we'll get rid of the little threes.
Yeah, there's.
I just noticed that too.
Let's see, in policy, JFABD, there's random blue numbers.
Yeah, I noticed that. And I went to look what they were, and it's just a blank page, yeah.
I think it's just, yeah.
They weren't in the drive the way that I, it was done differently.
I think it's just a remnant of the editing process, so that's not intentional.
Like, I literally had to retype them, so you're welcome. Yeah. So.
Sorry you had to do that.
So there may be edits.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you accept a motion to adopt JLCD as a second reading, JFABD as a second reading, JFABE as a second reading, and JFABF as a second reading?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on these? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of accepting these policies as a second reading?
Aye.
All right, five. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Laura?
While we are on policy and while we are talking about working smarter, not harder, one thing we also brought up about, whatever, before the holiday, is moving to host our policies with MASC, allowing the policy subcommittee to do the real work of digging into policies like the bullying, like the rental, and not be wordsmithing, which is how we've been spending a lot of time. I take responsibility for this, being on the subcommittee for so long. A lot of them are just out of date. We've had parents reach out with concerns. We've seen some issues. We've had parents reach out with concerns, we've seen some issues. We reached out to MASC and they quoted us a cost of three thousand dollars for the initial setup and then it's nine hundred dollars per year. We worked with, Jay did some questions, thank you Jay, to some other committees who have used it and if they have things like, we like to gra, you know, to graftenize it, because all of them are different, like this homeless one, we, or excuse me, my God, unhoused one. We need to put, who's your district contact? Obviously, it's different for every, so there's, and that was my biggest concern. All you do is reach out to MASC and they'll make the updates for us. Right now, what happens is either Liz and I, we work with Lynn, who's extremely busy and she's wonderful, so she takes it off, she makes the edits, it's back and forth. It's, it's difficult and I, I do take this job super seriously and it's, and we devote a lot of time to policy. I don't know if we've been utilizing our time and our energy on policy in the right way all these years. We've spent a lot of time cleaning up policies because they've been, as I've explained, Franken, Frankenstein together. So, and Liz is kind of, we've talked as the policy subcommittee, so sorry if I'm putting words in, this is like, this is a reset. We can reset, we can make sure we're all in compliance, it's easy for people to understand the policies and then we can do what the real work on policy is. So I don't know if we need a vote, maybe we do, it might feel better if we, I don't know, Liz.
I just, I think we were, we'd like to get the thoughts of the committee and, yeah, and I guess, one of the things I, I was concerned about in thinking about this was just making sure that we don't lose the work that we've done over the last year or so and, and try, so, one of the questions, I guess, in this, one of the questions unanswered for me still is, how is this, how, how are the policies housed with you at the MASC, since you, you've talked to them, like, is it, is it a link?
Yeah, so it's, it's right on their website, so it's, and you just, it directs them to the, and you look it up, like Menden Upton's policy, Grafton, whoever's there, like.
Okay, like I've seen on there, it's just like that.
Yeah, so they have their example policy, man, manual, which you and I look at all the time. And then they have the, but when you go, if I went to like Menden Upton's, I think, and I keep using them as an example, but they do it, would click on there and it goes to the policy. So it would be a little work on our end because we'd have to kind of, which, we have a good, such a good process now that we can go back in and we have them all, we could easily transfer, I think, I mean, it would take, it takes a little bit of time. And that's why we have like that startup fee, I think, too.
Okay.
So.
I'm a hundred percent in favor, somebody who's been on the committee not as long as Laura. I've just seen how hard policy subcommittee works and it's, it's almost like barely keeping your head above water sometimes. There's, you know, there's policies that need attention and there's only so many hours in a year. And I, I do worry slightly that we're going to get caught at some point with a super outdated policy that becomes a major issue. I like the idea of using the service, I've read about it before, I think they do a great job. The only possible downside that I see, and I just want people to be aware, is that if the policies are housed on the MASC servers, which they would be, I believe, they are not searchable by our search tool on our website. That's the only possible downside. I don't think our search tool gets a lot of use, I don't find that it works particularly well. I tend to use Google and put Grafton Public Schools and then the thing I'm searching for, because I know that's going to work. But I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. If you did that, if you searched Grafton Public Schools bullying policy, for example, not that that's what you would do, it would bring you to their site, it would find our policy on their site, as opposed to ours, which is totally fine. If parents know to do that, which we might need to tell them, I don't know.
And we can play around with.
I don't think it gets used a lot.
We can play around with it too, you know, with the other schools policy and see how that, see how easy things are to find.
Yeah.
You know, to make sure that.
I mean, I'm not too concerned about it, it has, I mean, we, we are, it is not, would not just be us, I mean, there is a list a mile long starting from, I mean, A to W. So, and I think they don't have quite as many policies as we have. It can easily, we make a note on our policy site, I mean, it's, it's just a matter of cross-communication and communication on, on a website. That, that would be the, my, my concern is, you know, I just, it's hard because we've been working on it for so hard and is it, and this is a big part of what we do, right? It's a third of what we do and, but it, it doesn't take away what we do and, and who Grafton is, it's just being smarter. And Amy said earlier, like, we are spinning our wheels on commas and as much as I love a comma, we could be working on, on really thinking about a policy that really impacts kids.
And even though we've tried to.
And we have, great job.
Yeah, tried to forget about the, you know, just small grammatical changes and we've tried to focus on, like Laura does an amazing job bringing to the forefront and bringing to the committee the policies that, that are most important to the committee at the time. But there's two hundred and seventy policies that we need to review on a three-year cycle. And, you know, and, and to Amy's point too, you know, we, those are changings, you know, the, the laws change, state policies change and for us to be able to keep up with that, to respond to that and go through the cycle of review for all of the policies in general.
But even just to be able to get alerts too, when, when things change, like part of the policy service is that we're going to get an alert, like when that decision comes down, you know, that's going to be an instantaneous, you know, they're going to let us know, we're going to need to adjust this policy, here's how we recommend you do it based on the decision. Okay, like that's way better than the two of you having to sit in a meeting with, you know, the school nurse or whatever and try to hash it out. Like, it's just a better use of your time.
And yeah, I mean, we're happy to do that, you know, we're, we're, we've been doing it for years and we're.
We love it.
But we also, like Laura said, there are other, other things that we, if we, if we have this, then there are other things we can focus more on, those that are most important and ensure that we're in compliance with them.
Yeah, the law.
The law, with, at all times.
At all times.
Yeah, and we have someone, I think you had brought up that these, the, the MASC policies are reviewed by expert, like people who are focused pretty much solely on this. They're the experts that we're tapping into, they're tapping into their expertise.
And I mean, some might call Liz and I an expert, some, myself, but, you know, yeah, all right, so thank you. Yeah, so I have a contract that I sent out to Jay and Kristin, I should send it to you and, and Liz.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance.
Yeah, no, I just sent, and I forgot to attach it this morning, so I, it didn't get till the afternoon. So move from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for letting me speak on that. I think it's a good move for us.
Yeah, good, thank you. Next we have member reports and given the time, if our student members have anything to report, I'd like to invite you guys to go first.
Yeah, so DECA has their district competition on Thursday and then on January twenty-first, they have their winter gala at High Fields at six, I think. And then semester one ends in two weeks, January twenty-sixth. And then on February sixteenth, there is a presentation for eighth grade parents at the high school.
Awesome.
The musical's rehearsals will be starting next week, so the show's been planned for March thirty-first, April first and April second, so it's pretty exciting. Mr. GHS has started its rehearsals next week. I'm just saying, I may be a little partial because I am one of the people organizing, but it's going to be really good this year, so keep your eyes and ears open for that, it's going to be on March third. AP classes will be taking some mock exams this month in preparation for the exams in May. It's a pretty good way to prepare yourself. And also NHS is actually having a babysitting fundraiser on February tenth, a little few days before Valentine's and in case anyone wanted to get a date night in. Any, it's from five to nine, it's a Friday. Anyone with a children ages five to eleven are welcome to drop their kids off at the high school. It will be NHS members looking after with our advisor, obviously. And we will be providing entertainment with games, crafts, movies, and yeah.
Do parents have to sign up so that you know how many kids are coming?
Yeah, there will be a flyer released, hopefully. We have, we have it set, I'm not sure when it's released exactly, but I think some people are posting it around places.
And do you want to say what the musical is?
The musical is Mean Girls, it's going to be super awesome.
You mean, come on, it's going to be super fetch.
Oh my God, how could I miss that?
Make fetch happen, Laura, it's not going to happen.
Someone kick me out right now.
I would never, you know.
I'm sorry, I'll be better next time.
It's fine.
There won't be a next time.
PD days are on Wednesday. I'm going to wear pink.
Keep going, keep going.
We could keep doing this.
Never mind, I'll. I was just going to say, we had a student member, James, was what, two years ago? And they talked about getting the candy cane, or the flat candy canes or something, and I asked him if Glenn Coco got any and he looked at me like I had six heads.
That was great.
And it was one of my final moments on this committee and it was, and I love you, James, wherever you are, I'm sure you're doing great.
He's watching too.
Watch Mean Girls, I'm sure he is. All right.
That was a fun meeting.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Um, I think that's about it.
Okay, great, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So if you guys want to sneak out, please feel free.
Just for the audience, so you can, so you can get this visual, Jay is mouthing the word go to the ladies over here. Like, go, get out of here.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member reports?
So I wasn't here last meeting, but I did attend a wellness committee meeting on December fifteenth. And I have on my datebook that tomorrow we have our second meeting. Haven't gotten any emails yet, but I'm thinking that's supposed to happen.
It should be, I have an email.
You had, got an email?
Yeah.
I did not get an email, but it's on my calendar.
You will.
Frank did not.
I'm on it as a parent, not as a school committee member.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know we could do that.
So maybe I'll reach out to Frank to let him know that I'm still coming.
Reaching out right now.
Here.
I think we're meeting at the high school.
Let his boss do it.
I looked at him, I was like, wait, I have a meeting tomorrow, I didn't respond, I can't.
If you're putting it in your calendar, that's half the battle.
If it's not on the calendar, it never happens.
Right, right, which is what I should do with the half days.
It never happens. I was like, if it's not, I, yeah, it's not on the calendar, it won't ever happen, so.
Any other member reports? No? Okay. Don't have any correspondence this week, right? I don't think we need executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned, thank you, good night, Grafton.